Okay, good afternoon. Now, I'm not actually Kate Barker, who was down to chair this session. As you can see, there's a clue on the screen, but I'll do my best to stand in for Kate. So we have three papers this afternoon. The background to the issue is that, as many of you will know, the ONS is always looking at better ways of measuring prices. Gosh, I wasn't expecting the slide to move like that. The ONS is always looking for better ways of measuring prices. And of course, technical change has meant that in at least some areas, there are many more data available than there used to be. And the ONS is expected to make use of scanner data, which of course have the advantage that for what they cover, they can be comprehensive. They're cheaper to collect, at least in terms of manpower. They're cheaper to collect than data collected by surveys and they're available promptly. Then there's the issue of measuring rental costs. That as more and more people find themselves renting, that is something that will, I think, only become more and more prominent. So it's important that the ONS should be measuring correctly. And then finally, there's the question of the use of unit value indices. When I started my career in the statistics office in Malah, we measured the price of aircraft spares as a unit value index, price per kilogram of aircraft spares. It struck me then, and it still seems that's a rather poor quality price index. But there are some commodities for which no unit values are an entirely appropriate thing to do. And we'll look forward to hearing about those. So we'll have the three papers in sequence, one after the other, and then take questions afterwards. So could I hand over, please, to Mike Hardy, Deputy Director for Prices Transformation, who'll talk about alternative data sources for measuring consumer prices? Mike, please.
Thanks, Martin. So for some time at ONS, we've been undertaking work to transform our consumer price statistics. So at a very high level, we're exploiting large admin datasets to improve the quality and granularity of our consumer price statistics. So on the right-hand side, you have a breakdown of the consumer prices index basket, broken down by category. And we've highlighted the areas of the basket that we are transforming with large data. So we try to build up the transformation over time. And we're very mindful of the risks here. So we want to ensure that we improve the quality of our statistics and avoid errors. And so I'll go into a bit more detail on the next slide. But we started with rail fares, then moved to second-hand cars and rental prices. And we're working towards incorporating grocery scanner data in March 2025. You know, the aim is to produce better quality statistics and give our users, and there are many users of price statistics, the best possible information to make decisions. We're also moving our entire IT infrastructure from the existing systems at ONS and to the cloud. That will give us the infrastructure to onboard these large data sources at pace in future. So that's been a large part of this work. So just looking at what we've delivered already, in 2023, we successfully incorporated new rail fares data. So we receive around 2 million prices a day from rail delivery group. We've set up our transformation in such a way that in advance of going live in March every year, we publish impact analysis just before Christmas to allow users to understand more about the change and the potential impact of that change. And then we make the change in the March. So we successfully delivered rail fares. And then, as I said earlier this year, we incorporated new second-hand car data. So we have data from all the trader, around 300,000 prices every month. Prior to this, we only used a sample of 105 prices. And we transformed our rent statistics, which Natalie is going to go into more detail on. We're working towards including grocery scanner data in March 2025. And that is a big change for us. We have grocery scanner data from several retailers. And we'll be going live with data covering around 50% of the market. So at the moment, we use around 200,000 prices in our consumer price statistics every month. And so we'll be moving to using hundreds of millions of prices every month. So it's a step change in the amount of data that we'll be using in our headline measures of inflation. So I'm now going to talk through some of the new methods that we'll be utilizing to exploit these new data sources. But I thought it would be helpful to go through a little bit of background about how we produce our consumer price statistics to start off with. So many of you will be familiar with the shopping basket of goods and services, which we compile at ONS. So it's a large shopping basket that represents what we, as UK consumers, spend our money on. And at last count, there's just over 750 items in that basket. It's a fixed basket, we fix it at the start of the year. And then we track the prices of those items throughout the year. There are a few underlying principles. So in the fixed basket, we want to control for quality and quantity changes. We want to measure the pure price change. So I'll just give a few examples. For example, if we're measuring the price of a chocolate bar and the weight of that chocolate bar changes, shrinkflation, covered in the media quite a bit, we'd make an adjustment for that. So we measure the pure price change. Numerous other examples, but we have a range of methods in place to control for quantity and quality changes. So we're measuring purely price change. We want to ensure that our basket keeps up with changing consumer spending patterns. So we update the weights every year. So the items that are in the basket, the relative importance of each item, that's updated in line with changing consumer spending patterns. And we also update the basket to include new items. And so this year, air fryers and vinyl records were included. So this is designed to ensure that it remains relevant and we keep pace with changing consumer spending patterns. Just a little bit on the data collection, how we currently collect our prices. So 80% of the quotes that we use are collected by Varian on our behalf. So we have price collectors that go into stores across the UK. Many iPads and collect that price information. I've broken the proportion of the basket that accounts for by weight there for CPI-H. So you can see the proportion that is actually collected in the field by relative importance. Then we also have some collection at ONS as well. So we collect data directly from websites manually. We have a team at ONS that does that via phone, and we do use some admin data. And this is a key point. We collect in and around index day, so on a particular day in the month. And that's important when I take you through the different data sources that we are trying to use on the next slide. So three data sources here, traditional, which I just talked through, data collected in the field, web script, so data collected from the underlying HTML code on a website, and scanner data as well. So I'm just going to quickly talk through the different attributes of each data source and the benefits of utilizing kind of large admin datasets. So scanner data is the one that we're particularly interested in here. So for traditional manual collection, for web script and scanner, that's automatic. For traditional, it's a sample. People are going to stores collecting a sample of prices when they go into your local supermarket. For web script and scanner data, it's a census. So when we get a feed from a particular supermarket, we know the prices of everything that's sold in store. In terms of frequency, I said for traditional collection, it's in and around a particular day of the month. For web script data, you can set it up in a couple of ways, but you can square it as frequently as daily. With scanner data, it's exact. So we receive data from a particular retailer and it'll cover a month. And then an important point from this slide is the lower level weights. So when we utilize traditional web script data, we do not have the lower level weights. So we can collect the prices, but we don't know how much of a particular product has been sold. And this is one of the significant benefits of scanner data, that we not only have a census of all the prices in a particular store, but we know how much of a particular product has been purchased. And that's particularly important when you're measuring changing consumer spending patterns. And I'll come on to that in a bit more detail later. So the methods that you need to utilize scanner data are slightly different to what we currently use. So in our consumer price statistics, we use kind of bilateral price index measures. And we're moving to, from certain aspects of the basket, where we're using big data multilateral kind of index methods. So they both measure price change. They both measure change from a base period to a current month. The difference is, is that a bilateral method only uses information from the base period and the month that you're measuring to, whereas the multilateral method uses information from a range of other months to inform the calculation. So we use a number of different formulae in our consumer price statistics. I'm just going to quickly go through these because one of them is used in the GEXT, which is the method that we use to utilize scanner data. So the top three are unweighted index formula. So Jevons is due to our prominent use in CPI-H and CPI. The Carley is used in RPI. Our position on that particular method has been clear for some time. It tends to over or underestimate inflation. And that's one of the main reasons why we're moving away from using the retail prices index. And these are all unweighted methods. So when we combine the prices, each price has the same weight. The Tompist is slightly different. And it's a weighted geometric mean. So each of the price relatives that we use in the calculation will have a weight. And that's important because, you know, it allows us to measure the economic importance of each item that's being sold. So a particular item may be dominated by the sale of a particular product. And a weighted Tompist will reflect the fact that more of a particular product is purchased. So there's been, I tried to highlight, there's been a range of research that has fed into getting us to this position. And we have a page on the ONS website. There's a range of papers on classification, index number methods, product grouping, multilateral index methods. And that's all held on one page on the ONS website. And there's also been a number of ESCO papers as well. This was the most prominent one, is the one I've linked there, which was published by Kevin Fox, who's an expert in this field and has informed the method that we've chosen to utilize scanner data. So I just wanted to flag all of that on our websites. So before I go into the GEXT in a bit more detail, I just wanted to cover off why are we using grocery scanner data and why are we using the GEXT? So thinking back to the fixed basket approach that I mentioned initially, products are fixed at the start of the year and we measure prices over the year. What the GEXT allows us to do is measure products entering and leaving the market. So it allows us to better measure shocks in inflation. So think back over the last few years, we've had the pandemic, war in Ukraine, et cetera. In the current approach, because we fixed the basket weights at the start of the year, it would be another year before we can update the weights and items in order to reflect the shocks. But now using the GEXT, we'll be able to reflect them in real time, so to speak. Because it's weighted, allows us to treat all of the products in line with their economic importance. And I'm not going to go into some of the other technicalities on the slide, but one of the big ones is it alleviates some of the challenges around chain drift. So when you update the weights and items in an index, it's best practice to then chain link because you've changed the structure of the index. So if you're doing that every month and chaining month after month, your index suffers from something called chain drift, which doesn't need particularly good measures of inflation. But the main takeaway is here that it will allow us to measure products entering and leaving the market. And it'll also allow us to weight them at the lowest level. So we'll be able to pick up changes in consumer spending patterns in real time. So now I'm going to talk through the GEXT. So I'll just say upfront, I appreciate this maybe a little bit heavy going for the next few slides. And one of the challenges for us as an organization is ensuring that we communicate this thoroughly to users and everyone understands how we're using the data. So if anyone has any feedback following the presentation, more than happy to listen. So there are a number of decisions that we need to make when using kind of GEXT. So we need to choose our underlying bilateral methods. So when I flashed up all of the different bilateral methods at the start, in theory, you could use any of these within a GEXT. We've decided to use Tompist. You then have to decide your window length. For consumer price statistics, we'll be using 25 months. For the example here, I've used 13. So you see on the next slide, it's just easier to talk through. And then we also need to choose an extension method. So one of the principles of consumer price statistics is that we don't revise. So we need a way of incorporating these data without revising the back series. And that's what the extension method does. So in this example of GEXT, we're measuring inflation between T1 and T5. And the window length is T1 to T13. So instead of presenting this algebraically, I've tried to do it with a diagram, which hopefully will make a little bit more sense. So you can think of the GEXT as a stepping stone. So we're measuring inflation between red T1 and blue T5. And in order to do that, we're calculating multiple Tompist indices. So in order to do that, we step from T1 in red to T1 in kind of the yellowy color. And then from T1 to T5. We also then step from T1 in red to T2, then to T5, and work our way down the window. So then it would be T1 to T3 to T5, T1 to T4 to T5. And for each of those steps, you calculate an individual Tompist, which is the bilateral method that I mentioned previously. You then get a long list of Tompist calculations. And in order to get the overall index for between T1 and T5, you take the geometric mean of all of those various Tompist calculations. So the next step then is how to incorporate it in our consumer price statistics. And I appreciate it's really difficult to see that, but hopefully I can talk through the principle. So the calculation that we just did was to measure inflation between T1 and T5. So if you look at window one, we have essentially calculated what's in window one month five. And for the 13-month window, you want to repeat that calculation. So you repeat the calculation that we've just done. So you measure inflation between month one and month two, month one and month three, and you work your way down. As you get an extra month of data, you then have a second window. And as you get another month of data, you have a third window. We calculate a linking factor, which is basically taking a particular month. So if you take month two, for example, calculate the ratio between the indices and divide through month window two by that ratio. And we do the same for window three. And that essentially puts all of these windows on the same basis. And then from that, we can build our index, which is the table on the right-hand side. So if we look at the table on the right-hand side, if you look at the column that says window one, and then cross-reference this with a published column. So window one, month one, two, three, four, and five will be taken from window one. You can see the corresponding figures in the published column. Then month six will be taken from window two, as we've got another window data. And month seven will be taken from window three. And then you build up your published series kind of each month using the windows and the mean spicing method that we'll be using for consumer prices here. So in summary, scanner data, the GEXT allows us to make better use of dynamic data. In the UK, we'll be using GEXT with a 25-month window. And we've taken our stepping stone approach that I talked you through in the diagram. And that is how we'll be incorporating scanner data in consumer price statistics. Appreciate the last few slides would have been heavy going. We're thinking about how best to communicate some of this. So as I said, open to take any feedback after the session. Now I'll hand over to Natalie.
Okay, so my name's Natalie. I lead the team that have transformed our rental price statistics at the ONS. So I'm going to be talking to you about why we've done that, what our new methods are, and also how we're presenting our new statistics. So why we've done it? So we had feedback from a consultation with users a few years ago and also a review conducted by the Office of Statistics Regulation, where we found two main areas of development that we wanted to achieve. So the first one was being able to publish private rental price levels that were comparable over time. And the second was that we could publish greater geographic granularity, such as local authority. So over the past couple of years, we've been transforming our rental price statistics by making better use of our existing data sources, improving our methods, and also developing our systems. The new statistic is called the Price Index of Private Rents, or PIPA for short, as we love our acronyms. Previous to that, we had both the Index of Private House and Rental Prices, or the IPHRP. This was the index that was used to feed into the inflation measures. We also had the Private Rental Market Summary Statistics, or the PRMS. And we published this every six months. The Index of Private House and Rental Prices provided a region-level analysis. And it gave an index and annual change over time. However, it did not publish average prices, so those price levels. On the other hand, the Private Rental Market Summary Statistics provided a local authority analysis for England, where we produced simple average prices at a point in time. That meant that these weren't comparable over time. So we brought out the best in the two of these indices stats that we produced before. And we've created the Price Index of Private Rents, which can now be compared over time at a local authority level. And so we gained access to the microdata from the Valuation Office Agency back towards the end of 2019. And that meant we could now improve our methodology. So previously, our Index of Private Houses and Rental Prices methodology was based on a matched pairs approach. This meant we were splitting our data into a sample and a substitution pool. The sample was the pool, the data that we use to measure the index. And it meant that we could only conduct a region-level analysis. The New Price Index of Private Rents uses a hedonic regression model. And it now means that we can use all the data that we have collected, which means we can now produce a local authority level analysis. So these are all the data sources that we use, there's quite a few of them. So on the left, you can see our rental price data. So these are collected by colleagues in the Valuation Office Agency, the Welsh Government, Scottish Government, and also the Northern Ireland Housing Executive. It results in a collection of around half a million properties every year. These organizations have rent officers who go out and collect data from landlords and letting agents on the rental prices of properties every month. We then link this data to some property attributes data from the Valuation Office Agency Council Tax List and also the Land and Property Services Northern Ireland. This allows us to have more information on the property, such as the floor area and also the age of the property. We also link to these other two data sources. So the first, the National Statistics postcode lookup, which allows us to assign a local authority to each rental property as we have their address. And also CACI ACON, which is a geodemographic segmentation of different postcodes. So it allows us to really understand the area that the property resides in. The Northern Ireland data here are highlighted in blue. This is because we haven't yet published the improved measures for Northern Ireland. And we are working on them at the moment and expect to publish them in March 2025. So I'm going to give you an overview of the methodology now. The QR code on the screen will take you straight to our Quality Methodology Information Document, which will provide a lot more detail, as I'll just give a quite a high-level overview here. So we take our rental prices data and we link it to our property attributes data. On an annual basis, we create a fixed basket of properties. So this uses all of the properties that were collected the last year. You can think of this similar to the inflation basket of goods that we have and we keep the same throughout the whole year. In the fixed basket of properties, we need to have all the property characteristics included and have no missing values. So we impute these using a decision tree. Separately, we also calculate our annual weights. And these annual expenditure weights are important because it means that we can make sure that the aggregate indices are representative of the UK and Great Britain. So on a monthly basis, we create a monthly dataset of the latest rents. I'll talk through how we create that later on in my presentation. We impute any of those missing property characteristics. The categorical variables are imputed using a missing indicator, so they're set to missing. While the continuous variable uses a decision tree. We then fit these to an ordinary least squares regression model. We remove any outliers that are identified through this and we rerun that regression model. Using the coefficients produced from that regression model then, we apply these onto the properties in the fixed basket. And then this calculates imputed rental prices. So those imputed rental prices are the price of the property, the price of the rental property, if you were to have rented it in this month. We don't have the rent for the property for that month in our fixed basket. So this is what that regression model is doing. We then apply our annual expenditure weights so that we can produce indices. We use a Jevons index, which Mike went over earlier. So in terms of the regression model, we use a semi-log ordinary least squares regression model. And these are our independent variables. So it's the number of bedrooms, the log of floor area, the furnished status, the property type, so whether it's detached, semi-detached, terraced or flats. And the ACON category, as I mentioned before. We use local authority for England and Wales and broad rental market area for Scotland. And then we also have a property age bracket, so when the property was built. Our dependent variable then is the log of rent. There are some strengths and limitations to our methods. We do have a rich data source. We are now able to publish average prices that are comparable over time. We can do the local authority level analysis. And we can also do an analysis by property type and also by the number of bedrooms. There are, however, some limitations that users should be aware of when using the data. So there are data collection differences across the countries. So as you saw earlier, we have different data providers across England, Wales, Scotland, and Northern Ireland. In England and Wales, the majority of data is based on achieved rents. While in Scotland, the majority of the data is based on advertised rent. So there are some data collection differences to be aware of. It makes it more difficult to compare across the countries. There are some potential volatility at the local authority level as well. So users are advised to bear this in mind when making comparisons over time. We do advise you to use a look at the longer historic time series when looking at those smaller local authority level areas. So on the 1st of December, as Mike mentioned, we published an impact analysis to see how the new measure, the Price Index of Private Rents, compared to our old measure, the IPHRP. The Price Index of Private Rents is here in dark blue, whereas our old measure is in the lighter blue. You can see that the Price Index of Private Rents better reflects market changes in the rental market. And so particularly here, you can see during the pandemic where the rental price growth slowed and then it picked up more quickly in more recent years. And this is because of two main reasons with the methodology changes. The first, that we're now using all the data every month, whereas before, in the Index of Private Houses and Rental Prices, we were using that matched pairs approach. And so some of the data was going into our substitution pool. The second is that we're now waiting at a local authority level, whereas before we were waiting at a region level. So we can take better account of the collection across the different local authorities to make sure that it's more representative of the UK or Great Britain. Okay, so there are some different measures of rental price statistics out there as well. So you may have seen the Rightmove, Zupla or Homelet data. And the way that we're measuring them are slightly different. So we're measuring a stock approach, while Rightmove, Zupla and Homelet measure a flow. So to explain what this is, I want you to imagine a bathtub of water. So this analogy came from some colleagues at Countrywide a few years ago. So the bathtub of water is our stock of rent. So it's all the rents that are in the rental market at the moment, whether the tenants have been in there for years or just recent tenants. The flow of rents is that water coming in through the tap. So they're the new properties that are coming onto the market. Rightmove, Zupla and Homelet measure those new properties coming onto the market. If that water in the tap is really hot and rental prices are increasing really quickly, it will take time for that hot water to warm the rest of the bathtub up, so the stock. So how do we calculate, sorry, create our monthly dataset to represent the stock of rents? So we look at our previous month's dataset. And then we consider how long has it been since we last collected a price for that particular property? If it has been more than 14 months, then we drop that property from the dataset. This is because we assume that if a price of a property was collected more than 14 months ago, it's no longer valid. We don't know whether that price has gone up, down, we're not sure. So that's why we assumed that that So that's why we assume that that property price is no longer valid, and we drop it from the dataset. And this kind of, it goes between like the average contract length and also the collection practices of our data suppliers, who tend to follow up at different, the rental properties or the letting agents and landlords after 12 months. If it's been 14 months or less, then we keep that property in the dataset. We then have a look to see whether there's been a re-collection for the property from the newly collected properties. If there hasn't, then we just keep that property in the dataset, and it remains unchanged. If there has, then we look at the price and see whether it meets some tolerance checks. These tolerance checks are mainly there to make sure that we are comparing the same property. So if there has been a really crazy increase in price from the one to another, then we probably think that that's probably not the same property. So the tolerance checks are quite wide. You'll be able to find those on our Quality and Methodology Information Document. And so if they do, we update the price of the property that's in the dataset and update all the property attributes that are associated with it. If it doesn't, then we reject that property because we assume that it's not from the same place. Any properties that are collected that month that haven't existed in our monthly dataset already, are just added into that month's dataset, so we're using all the properties that have been collected. Now we're aware of the stock and flow measures. This is a comparison to the private sector measures. And so you can see particularly during the, just after the pandemic, so at the end of, towards the end of 2021, you can see the rental prices of properties in the private sector measures increasing very quickly, and they've stayed quite high through since 2022. You can see our Price Index of Private Rents there, kind of in that middle point at the end, reacts about six months, about a six-month lag because of that stock-based approach. So as I mentioned earlier, we can now split our rental price statistics by property types and number of bedrooms, and that gives us some new insights that we couldn't get before. So on the left, we have the annual growth by property type, and on the right, we've got it by the bedroom category. And a bit to pull out here is that really light green line is for flats. And you can see kind of just during the pandemic area, those slowed down more than the other property types. And this could have been because of change in housing preferences during that time, and also a lot of the flats are situated in London as well. Looking over at the bedroom category, you can kind of see that reflected again in the one-bedroom properties there during the pandemic, and the four or more-bedroom properties increased more quickly than the other bedroom categories. So in terms of how we're presenting the statistics, we can now split by local authority in England, Wales and broad rental market area in Scotland. And we have an interactive map. If you scan that QR code again, it will take you straight to where this interactive map is. So I've done a little demo on the slides here, so you can go back to January 2015, hit play, those darker blue areas are where the rents is most expensive, and the lighter colours are where the rents are cheaper. You can search for a local authority that you're interested in. So if we search for Liverpool here, it will take you in and you can compare how the price in Liverpool compares to Great Britain. You have a look at the local authorities around it as well. So it's just a really good way to have a look at the data. You can then switch to the annual change as well, so you can see where our rental price is growing more quickly across the UK or Great Britain at the moment. And these bluer shades, purple shades are where there's slower growth or decreasing rental prices. And the orange, darker orange shades are where there are greater growth. So you can see as we come through into 2022, there's more growth in rental prices across Great Britain. We have also created a housing prices in your area tool, which brings together house prices and rental prices. Again, this QR code will take you straight to that tool. And so on the tool, you can search for a local authority in your area as well. We'll stick with Liverpool here. And it brings together, as I said, the house prices and rental prices. So you can see there, we've got our headline house price and the rents. And then as you scroll down, it gives you kind of good overview of what's happening to the house prices and rental prices in your area. There's lots of different stats there. So what's next? So the improvements so far have better met user needs. We've had some excellent feedback on our work states, particularly on how we've been presenting the statistics. We do want to incrementally improve that local housing tool that you saw, maybe thinking about bringing different data sources into it to create more of a talk around it, more of a story. And as I said earlier, we haven't brought those improvements into Northern Ireland yet, but that is due to happen in March 2025. If you do have any questions on any of the rental price transformation work that we've got that we don't answer today, you can contact us on the HPI inbox, so hpi@ons.gov.uk. And I'll hand over to you.
Hello, I'm Rob Bucknor. I head the Deflators team at the ONS, and I'm going to present on how my team has researched using HMO unit values for measuring inflation in trade commodities. So given overview of existing methods using use in measuring trade inflation, I'll explain the reasons for the need for a new method. I'll discuss UVIs and their relevance in inflation measurement. And I'll explain the proposed multilateral index methods for improving inflation and highlight the advantages of these methods. I'll also discuss our implementation plans, and I'll end with a couple of case studies. So current methodology. So the import and export price indices that we currently produce are very important in the measurement of inflation. The Import Price Index measures the price change of capital items imported into the UK, providing insights into the cost of imported materials used in domestic production. The EPI measures the price change of products manufactured domestically and exported abroad. Now, the government uses IPI and EPI data to formulate trade policies. So by monitoring price changes in traded goods, policymakers can assess the competitiveness of domestic products in international markets and make informed decisions regarding trade policies. Also, the indices help in addressing nominal trade values in inflation, enabling more accurate assessment of real trade performance. So by deflating trade values, economists can identify whether changes in trade volumes are due to actual shifts in physical quantities or whether they are simply more reflective of changes in prices. If import prices rise significantly, as indicated by an increasing the IPI, it may put pressure on domestic currency, potentially prompting policymakers to consider adjustments in exchange rate policies to maintain competitiveness in international trade. And the IPI and EPI also serve as leading indicators for inflation. So they allow analysts to anticipate potential inflationary pressures arising from changes in import and export prices. So by incorporating these indices into economic models, forecasters can improve the accuracy of their inflation projections. The current methodology, it's standard price index methodology really, so samples are selected for a range of imported and exported products. Price data is collected from customs trade reports, but predominantly from surveys. Weighting of items is based on their share of expenditure in the product group. And price index calculation uses the LeSpare's formula. So prices are compared to the base period and weighted using base period rates. And then indices are aggregated to the overall IPI or EPI. Limitations of the current methodology relate to data quality and coverage, particularly in areas where we have small samples and incomplete collection. Also, price volatility, which could be due to exchange rate fluctuations or supply chain problems as opposed to underlying inflation trends. And finally, failure to consider quality changes of products over time can also distort inflation measures. So if you think of a mobile phone now compared to 20 years ago, it's very different, and the additional features now received must be reflected in the index. But it can be difficult to actually obtain the information required to make the adjustments in some of the trade indices. Rational change, firstly, cost. So UVIs can be more cost-effective to produce compared to survey-based indices, as they provide the opportunity to leverage existing admin data sources. Survey-based methods typically require substantial resources for data collection and also processing and analysis, whereas UVIs can be generated with relatively lower costs. And any savings made could potentially allow surveys to be pivoted towards areas of emerging interest. For example, services where we recognise there's a need to increase the number of prices collected and SPPI, Service Producer Price Indices, produced. Second, coverage. So UVIs can be more comprehensive in their coverage of import and export transactions compared to survey-based indices, as these suffer from sample size limitations or non-responsive biases. Admin data sources cover a broader range of transactions, including those involving smaller firms and less frequently traded goods, leading to more representative indices. And finally, accuracy and consistency. So UVIs are less susceptible to reporting errors or response biases compared to survey-based indices, as they rely on objective transaction data. So this can enhance the accuracy and consistency of the indices. The unit value indices. So unit value index is a statistical measure used to track changes in the average price of a specific unit of products over time. A unit value in a particular period is calculated by dividing the total value of transactions in the period by the total quantity of units transacted in that period. And the unit value index is the ratio of unit values between two different periods. While it can be used to track prices, the unit value index is actually a value index, not a price index. And it's sometimes used as a surrogate for price index when the characteristics of the product allow. Unit value indices are well suited to homogeneous products because they focus on the average value of a single unit of a uniform product. So these are products that cannot be distinguished from competing products from different suppliers, which essentially have the same characteristics and quality. So therefore, one product can easily be substituted for the other. And because of this uniformity, changes in the average value of a single unit can accurately reflect overall price changes within a group of homogeneous products. So in this case, value change is a really good proxy for price change. So for example, if you're measuring the unit value index for sugar, where each unit is very similar to the next, any change in the average value per unit would likely reflect changes in the overall price of sugar accurately. Indifferent between whether I buy one brand of sugar to another. On the other hand, if you were dealing with heterogeneous products, such as cars, where each unit can differ significantly from others, it would be more challenging to derive meaningful conclusions from changes in the average unit value. As varies between, variations between units could skew the results. So value change in this instance would not be a good proxy for price change. Multilateral index methodology, so Mike actually went through a lot of this. When it comes to using index formulae to aggregate prices into indices, it's really important to consider the type of data processed and availability of product level weights. Alternative data sources allow us to obtain much greater product and time coverage of markets, and the acquisition process is a lot more automated. So multilateral index methodology is increasing in popularity now as bigger datasets are becoming available. Traditional unweighted bilateral index methods, like the Jevons index, compare the price in the measurement period to the base price, and they don't apply weights at the elementary level. So these are only suitable for static datasets, which have fixed content and no change in size. Multilateral index methods incorporate data from multiple periods, and they're suitable for use on both static datasets and also on dynamic datasets, where content can change and size may vary over time. So this is what static and dynamic datasets look like. So static datasets have fixed content and no change in size, and the structure remains the same. In dynamic datasets, content can change and size may vary over time. So the structure changes with additions and removals. So there are numerous benefits to multilateral methods, including weighting by economic importance, ability to handle missing data. They enable the use of alternative data sources, which leads to improved coverage and presents the opportunity to automate data collection and processing, improving efficiency. And importantly, accurately representing price changes over time. Now, we're yet to decide exactly which multilateral method we're going to use. We need to go through a few more procedures, such as testing methods against a range of datasets with different pricing behaviours, and also conducting an impact assessment. But for the purposes of this presentation, I present two methods, which are certainly very promising. And these are the, first, the multilateral GEXT, GEXT method. So this is the, this is the method that's used for CPI used cars and rail fares. And the second method is the multilateral time product dummy method. So Mike has described the multilateral GEXT method in his presentation, so I won't go into detail. Just to say that the multilateral GEXT means that it uses multiple values from within the window. It uses multiple Torkist indices, so these are bilateral indices using weighted geometric mean, and the weights are based on expenditure shares. The multilateral time product The multilateral time product dummy method involves the use of time and product dummy variables in regression analysis. These dummy variables represent specific time periods and product categories, allowing the method to capture the effects of changes in time and product composition on prices and predict values of missing observations. Overall, the multilateral T P D method is effective, particularly when dealing with missing data and prices influenced by changes in time and product composition. So moving on to implementation plans and further work. The plan is to implement the new methods to deflate imports and exports of the listed products into the 2025 national accounts. There's hard coal, crude oil, natural gas, refined petroleum and basic precious and non precious metals. So we've conducted an exercise considering the homogeneity of the products and comparing U V I's with trusted sources and identified that these are very suitable candidates for early implementation. We're currently going through the process of assessing the impact of the method's changes. So further work will involve finalizing testing and validation to choose the appropriate multilateral method, integrating new methods into the deflation system, communicating improvements and expectations to users and considering the suitability for implementation on further products in the future. So now I have a couple of case studies. First is crude petroleum. So we compare the multi GEX T, multi T P D with our existing deflators and with the commodity index sourced from Bloomberg. Note that we don't collect export prices for crude petroleum. So the producer price index, which is a domestic index, is used as a proxy in a deflator for exports. Now, this is a case where we have confidence in our existing deflators and it's reassuring that both the GEX T and the T P D series track these quite well for both exports and imports. The second case study is refined petroleum products. We now also compare against a Eurostat measure. So this is the aggregation of P P I's of euro countries. And this, this is a case where we are aware of problems with both the E P I and I P I for the product due to limited sample sizes and poor response rates. And here, reassuringly, the GEX T and T P D both track the Bloomberg and Eurostat methods quite closely. And they're quite different from the existing E P I and I P I. So which given their quality ratings is probably not such a bad thing. As we believe the switch to U V I method would be a major improvement. Just to summarize, we are aware of limitations of existing survey based UK trade price indices. U V I's present the opportunity for improvement for homogeneous products. Multilateral indices are capable of capturing the dynamic nature of H M R C data. Two case studies were presented comparing the multilateral GEX T and T P D methods against existing UK trade price indices and alternative measures from Bloomberg and Eurostat. Both methods are promising, effectively tracking E P I's and I P I's with good quality ratings, while also deviating from those with poor quality ratings. The plan is to implement U V I's into the 2025 national accounts for a section of products. That is my team's email address if you'd like to get in touch. Thank you.
Okay, so now we're open to questions. And perhaps I could start by asking a question about the work on the scanner data. Are you able, please, to give any sense of how, over some historic period, this would have changed estimates of the rate of food price inflation or all inflation? Some indicator of how important it is in practice, please.
So as I said in the presentation, we did incorporate the scanner data in March next year. We should have the first estimate out in July this year, so that will be a first look at the data. And that will allow us to compare the new scanner data for estimates against previously published estimates and then we will publish those indices November, December time this year, so stakeholders will be able to see the impact that it would have had if we had incorporated the new data sources previously at that point in time.
Yes. Okay, well, thank you very much. Well, we have learnt a great deal about the way inflation numbers are changing and expected to change in the future, or not the numbers, the estimation of the rates of rates of inflation and price indices more generally, but could, no, could I throw this open to questions from the floor, please? Please, Chris.
Just a question on both the scanner data and the revenue data. On the scanner data, just to follow up on Martin's question. Chris, just a much, much time. Our question about the scanner and revenue data, on the scanner data. Just to follow up on Martin's question. I'm aware of its failures between the individual prices and versus coming up tomorrow. And it's something very similar, although it's an A I driven model of spread prices. Could you talk through the differences between that sort of approach and presuming that? How is it there? And on the revenue data, I noticed that the new measures really has been significantly higher in inflation terms than the old measure. Apart from a very short period. Can you talk about why that is? And how much has over inflation been supermised, supermised therefore? And that means that's underestimated by not using this in part.
Okay, Mike, would you be able to take?
Yes, it's my understanding that the research published tomorrow will utilise web script data. So when we go live with scanner data, we'll have the underlying quantities that we can feed into the GEX T, as explained in my, my presentation. With the analysis tomorrow will, will not. I spoke to Richard last week, I think it's a really good piece of work. I think what Alessia is doing will complement kind of a headline message of inflation that we will publish. That'll be a bit more timely and give a snapshot of what's happening to food prices. But they want to have the underlying quantities and they won't be combining the data in the way that we will be when they feed into the headline message of inflation, so you would expect the quality to be better. But that doesn't mean there isn't a place for that type of analysis. I think it's really valuable.
Yeah, and then on the rent, particularly more recently, where rental prices have increased quickly. You have been able to see the differences more clearly between the old measure and the new measure, as you said. And that is driven by two main technological differences, one being that we're now using all the data as it comes in. So whereas before we weren't using every single price type in that month because of that much as methodology. We only use the ones that were already in the sample and to update that kind of much. The methodology worked, we're now using all the data instead. The second reason is that we're now waiting at the local authority level. So we're making, we're better representing those local authorities that they have been underrepresented before, which generally were larger cities, which generally have faster rental price growth, particularly in these sorts of times. In terms of your question on the inflation measures, and I don't have the differences off the top of my head. However, we did publish that on the first of December. And the differences are more prominent more recently. Particularly because of the larger rental price inflation at the moment and in the last two years or so. Rental prices, for those who didn't know, do be into our three measures of inflation, the F P I, C P I and C P I H. And it's used to measure the owner occupied passing cost element of the C P I H. And so it's a larger weight in that from the other two. If you look kind of before the time when the rental prices were growing more rapidly, the impact there was much smaller. And as I said, if you look at our publications on the first of December, there's a lot more detail there. And that's what it is.
Okay, well, thank you very much. Does that answer your points, Chris? Okay, do we have further questions, please? At the back of the room first and then the, oh, sorry. So, well, would you like to ask him to repeat it? Could you, could you repeat, repeat the question a bit louder, please?
When you're talking about tomorrow, this is just. Who makes the decision about whether or not posting that? We went through an exercise where we assessed the homogeneity nature of the product, products that we've gone through. I suppose that that could be considered to be a bit subjective. So we considered where, whether the products would be easily substituted for other products within the grouping. Or where the code, they weren't natural substitutes. And we also compared against other data sources from Bloomberg and Eurostat, so in terms of the trends in their movements. I think those, those indices that we've identified so far were the ones which are most likely to be homogeneous. There were others that we did consider could also potentially be introduced, but we decided against it for now.
Okay, there's someone behind you first, yes.
Hi, Emma.
So at the moment, across the division that we have in prices, we're all manually labelling data. And we're using that manually labelled data then to inform kind of our classification tool that we use to classify the data to call it classification structure. And then we aggregate those data. So we're hoping in future to have kind of a less manual process and we're working with our data science campus. I know that Liam Greenhoff, who works in my kind of methods team, has provided some feedback on your paper. And we're keen to work with you particularly on the classifications. I think there's a lot that we can learn from, from you. And when I read the paper, I thought it was a really valuable piece of research. Definitely adds to the evidence base on inflation.
Josh, please.
Thanks, Jonathan, from the back. And a question from Ross, which I think relates to the previous question. You gave the example of sugar, but that's not one of the ones that you're proposing to see as positive. It seems to me that although sugar has some modules characteristics, there are different brands of sugar that come from different sorts of production and agricultural techniques from places around the world. Might have local qualities or different ethical production qualities. And those sorts of consumer preferences for, say, organic or, you know, well sourced things would be more so in the case of food products. So I wonder if sugar was a good example or not. And even in the case of these other types of commodities, in the case of natural gas, for instance, which you would think for most times is a modern product. It turns out that the country that that comes from is quite an important factor at the moment. So perhaps those sort of different types of commodities are not quite so modern about all. So the question around that and a related question, if I may, also from Ross. He had in this multilateral dummy regression process of products. And I didn't understand with all of the product dummy, if you're saying that all of the product is modules. So could you explain what exactly that product is and how it relates to the modules product table, which I'm placing in the U P I?
So we'd like to take that, please.
So in the multilateral time product dummy method, the method tries to, or method assesses the contribution of the presence of the product and the time period to predict the price. Particularly good where we have missing data in terms of, and we have the time product data to try and predict what the price would be. For the sugar example, you might be right. I mean, this is just, I just thought, I'm indifferent. When I go to Sainsbury's, I'm quite happy to get taken by, or quite, quite, I'll get the Sainsbury's own bag of sugar. But yeah, I suppose there are other factors to consider. But your other question was, oh, natural gas, wasn't it? Yes, we've looked at natural gas and yeah, there, so. I mean, there's various, obviously export to or import from various countries. I think we've done that because, well, gas, I think we have considered natural gas to be a homogeneous product when we looked at our assessment. Yeah.
I mean, could I add to that, that it seems to me that it's not just the question is natural gas homogeneous, but also what are the gains relative to the possible losses of measure? Or the gains in accuracy relative to the possible losses of accuracy from measuring in this way? So even with sugar, you might well argue, yes, we know brown sugar is different from white sugar and so on. But actually nearly all the sugar is white sugar. And whether British, you know, British sugar is different from cane sugar, well, views differ on that. But in the round, it may be thought to deliver a more accurate number than the alternative of relying on surveys. And certainly the graph you showed with the E P I, a long way from all the other indicators. Was it the E P I or the I P I?
Both.
Both, yes, okay, so both of them did make me think that you shouldn't let the best be the enemy of the good.
Yeah, I'd certainly agree. I mean, so we've got the data available from other government departments. It would improve our efficiency, you know, costly. efficiency, you know, costly. If we, if we've got the data, then we really should be using it because we know that we do have limitations to our existing IPAs and EPAs, certainly natural gas, which is one you highlighted there.
There was a question on the right, please.
Thanks. Through the interesting presentations, I hope it's made that the question for Rob as well, just taking Martin's point, I think, sort of the steps. So if the products are homogeneous, generally the ones that are there are things that are globally traded and probably have a fairly you know, very global price. And just whether actually using some of the proxies from other countries or other market collections might be even more efficient use than some of the collection. Have you thought about the trade offs between you know, using, using another basis from, from other NSIs or from economic markets rather than this approach?
Yep, certainly. And that is something we've already done in some of our deflators. For example, in the, in our computer hardware deflator that was introduced into 2023 national accounts. Due to some of the limitations with the computer hardware import price index. We created our own, well, we created a proxy using the indices of other countries, so averaging those countries. We did consider, you know, we could have, I suppose, also considered the Eurostat measure as well. Are there further questions in the room, please, please?
Thanks so much. Isaac, you're NatWest. Just a question on, on quality prices, very basic for my knowledge. Does it, is there enough data to deduct shipping costs so that it's definitely a commodity to be measuring? That's a kind of question on commodities on the, on the rental market. It seems to be all around London, so heavily around London, the southeast of the market. Comments you have on what that means, the significance of the data or the design, the engagement of the data. And then I just happened to wonder if anyone on the panel had a recommendation for a book on index number theory.
In terms of shipping cost, I'm not sure whether the HMRC data includes that. Yeah, sorry.
And in terms of the rental price index, you're right, there's lots of the rental properties around London and the south east. And we do publish some of our weights as well, which you can apply and see. And that in the indices that you could see earlier that I showed, you could see that London just does generally kind of on a G B index, it just does drive that a lot. So you can see where the flat index was going up and then down. And or the way around, and that is different, but there, but you can break down to the other regions and the other local authorities as well. And which also affect by that, we also run our regression models separately for England, Wales and Scotland. And so that might be of interest as well. And I don't have anything in terms of index theory, but however, we did base our rental price index of international guidance using the Eurostat manual, which just goes through a lot of options that is definitely a theory and like how you can produce residential property price indices.
So Kevin, please. Are you going to draw our attention to your latest paper on index number theory?
I would, maybe. Kevin Fox, so you understood this in SIBM and ESCO. On index number theory, I recommend either the 2004 CPI annual, the monthly CPI annual, that's of theory chapters and for the most recent provision of the CPI manual is accompanied by some theory chapters online. Brief download written by Ellen Jewett. CPI theory. Also, it's available online. Everything in one level of index number theory and more is available and that's chapters on. Great presentations. Of that. You ever need to demonstrate that what you're doing is stable, a graph like that last time you showed up. Probably that's it. It's good in the sense that it shows that what you're going to be changing, you're going to make really important. It is extremely worrying though about how, what, what but put on the O N S for the bonus set and it's great to see more of that one. Now that we're just seeing the line. The ABS is really using more of that one. Rental as QR codes worked and I much appreciate it. The graphics that you guys have provided, this is really setting a new standard for national physical offices. Um, I'm, I'm, my apologies, I missed most of the first presentation, which I should have been. And just one question about that. So you, you're going to use an external description, right? The mean spice on the published series. I'm not quite sure you're going with mean spice on the published series rather than using regular mean spice. There's this whole business of splicing on published series. It doesn't mean that much sense. This, while my own work has constantly shown, there's not much difference between using the mean spice and the regular, I'm sorry, the regular mean spice and mean spice in published series. It could be that's just a common one. So people are not familiar with this all about. You know, you have your original window and then you get another oscillation data and create another window, roll four. And then you link those two series and mean spice is sort of maybe ranking on every period that you average what you get from all those. And all those different periods. So mean spice, regular mean spice on published series, you get the same because two windows. And then you have a third window, you get another data observation, one of their roles forward. Now, the mean spice, you can hear the adjacent windows, where you have more foods that overlap. The more similar windows, it's the product coverage between those similar periods. But the slicing on the published series, you're skipping over the most adjacent period and you're going to the original. Where product coverage is probably more so similar. And then the next window comes and the next window comes and you keep on going back to the original window. The spice on that and I couldn't really understand why that's the best way of doing it. Even though you did want to get the same answer. As long as you're using some of the mean splicing. The point would be using regular mean spice rather than I wonder if there's some reason for why you shouldn't.
It's okay. And so I did cite your paper actually before you joined. Kevin published a paper on the GEXT, which we've used to inform the methods that we've used. It's my understanding on splicing that the differences are very small. I could take that away with the team on the specifics of why we've actually chosen that, that method. But it's my understanding that the differences are very small regardless of which splicing method you use. But yeah, I can come back to you on exactly why we've taken that point. Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, further questions, please? Well, please, could I include a couple more questions? You mentioned the issue of communicating how the price indices are calculated. And the fact that GEXT, Chris, makes this a bit more complicated. What sort of exercises, if any, are you able to do to see how your communication is working?
So I was having this conversation with a colleague from the OSR on the train on the way up, thinking about what more we can do to communicate some of the more complex methods. And I think there's definitely a place for us potentially recording kind of videos with animation that we can link people to and talk them through kind of the GEXT, how it's calculated from the beginning. With some of the diagrams that I, that I used today.
Yeah.
And I think it's pushing out kind of those types of products as early as possible. So we can start to socialize them with users and understand from our perspective where the stakeholders are understanding these, these new methods. So I think there's definitely some work for us to do in this space and the quicker that we can push some of these kind of new products out to help people understand some of these new methods, I think we'll, we'll gain a better understanding of whether people, whether they're landing essentially.
Yes, I suppose it's all, it's important to communicate not only what you're doing, but also why you're doing it. Because there'll always be people who say, can't we just rely on a simple formula? I mean, the extreme example of that is what I used to call the Daily Mail Price Index. You look at the prices of thirty, twenty five or thirty items in a supermarket, give them equal weights and movements and that tells you how the cost of living is changing, which of course it doesn't.
Yeah, I think a trap we've fallen into a little bit already is focusing on the number of data points. So often when we're asked, you know, we're doing this transformation, we're moving from using a couple hundred thousand data points to potentially billions. And I think we've missed a piece because often people have come back to us and said, well, why does that matter? Why is that improving the statistics? So I think the slide I had about capturing products that you know, come into the market, leave the market and better capture and changing consumer spending patterns in real time. I think getting across some of those points, we haven't done particularly well yet, but we need to think about how we can do that in the run up to March twenty twenty five.
Yes, well, thank you. And I also had a question on the rental index. I mean, you mentioned that you use local authority weight. How variable are the weights across local authorities? Because, you know, it's if you have some local authorities with very high weights, some with very low weights, then you could easily get no random effects, no random variation amplified in a way that might not be very helpful.
Yeah, so we wait our indices using the local authorities by type by finished status. And, and we do publish the weights online at more aggregated levels, but they're a little bit more user friendly to take a look at. And but yeah, as you said, then, then having volatility in some of the local authority estimates and and by weighting them up, it generally the indices are, are look pretty, pretty stable and the, the weights there of high quality we use, different data sources and from O N S and from the different departments of the stock. And our rental property as well.
Well, I suppose I'm as worried about the weight you put on the actual observations. If you had a local authority where you observed only one rental price, you'd be, you'd be giving a very high weight and it's the risk of that that concerned me.
If there are any, so our strata level is local authorities by type by finished status. And if there's any that have less than five properties in there in the fixed basket, then we will impute that using the overall local authority and index. And so we do make sure that they aren't too low of accounts. And there are some local authorities that we don't produce in these four because of local houses, which is the city of London and the island of Italy as well. So it is a bit that we have left out to ensure that we have and make the quality there.
Okay, thank you very much. So further question, please? And could you speak up, please? Okay, well, we have time for one final question or please.
Thank you, Lieutenant Harari from the National Service. On the scanner data, I'm just wondering how you will adjust for, you mentioned controlling the quality and quantity. With so much data, how will you incorporate that, those principles into the published figures? For example, with the, the food data or translation, how, how would you do that?
The data that we receive from retailers allow us to calculate unit cost essentially. So each line of data that we receive for a particular retailer will be a particular product in a particular store. And what we get from the retailers, total expenditure and quantities which allow us to drive a unit cost. And then that data then is fed into the XT and using information from more than two periods. Controls essentially for quality and quantity changes over time. So the methods are set, designed in that way. That's why you're bringing in information from more than two periods in order to control that.
Okay, well. Questions from online, sorry. How have recent methodological change? How have recent methodological changes in measurement of inflation improved the accuracy of inflation estimates in the UK? Anyone like, or is that something that you're going to be able to say when you've done the work that you described to us?
It's quite a broad question, but I would, what I would say is that drawing on international best practice and research from Kevin and others, you know, we've been able to kind of develop the methods that we are using. We've also moved to kind of cloud based platforms which allow us to process kind of billions of data points. I suppose those together have given us much better coverage and going back to having the underlying quantities for the scanner data. We're in a much better place to measure changing consumer spending patterns in, in real time because of the new methods coupled with the large data that we're, we're exploiting. So I suppose the advancements in kind of methods and, and data and IT platforms have allowed us to do that.
Okay, and then, though there were, well, there were a number of other similar questions online. Can you please share a link to the pro, to the program? So I'm not sure whether that's the oh, okay, yes, okay. Well, anyway, so we've done some online as well. Okay, well, thank you very much. And you've learnt a lot about what lies in the future and know, look to see continuing progress in the production of price statistics and inflation data. So thank you to all the speakers.